Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the minutes, to ask your committee to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 3rd of April 2019, and the social meeting held on 23rd of April 2019, which have been laid on the table for half an hour. Agreed? Apologies for absence. Are there any apologies for absence?
Chairman, yes, I've had apologies from councillors Jerome Davidson, Peter Isherwood, Robert Knowles and Stephen Mulliner.
Thank you very much. Are there any declarations of interest that have been received prior to the meeting, or whether members know of any declarations to make?
No declarations received before the meeting.
Are there any questions that have been received from members of the public?
No questions received.
Received from members?
No questions received, Chairman.
Before we go any further tonight, just for the sake of people in the audience, perhaps the planning team could introduce themselves one by one, and perhaps by themselves, so it saves my voice.
Excuse me, Chair. Paul McKim, Head of Planning.
Chris French, Area Team Leader.
Philippa Staden, Planning Officer.
Pat O'Carthay, Deputy Development Manager.
Beth Howland-Smith, Development Manager.
Barry Devlin, Planning Sister.
Very much. Right. Beth Howland-Smith, are there any updates to come and go into legislation we should be aware of?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Two appeal decisions were received last week whereby the inspector dismissed the appeals based on a lack of clarity about the impact on the Wildon Heath Special Protection Area. Natural England, who are a statutory consultancy on development affecting a European site, either an SPA or an SAC, have been consulted on the decisions, and specifically the housing applications which are on the committee's agenda, and have confirmed that, taking into consideration the distance of these units from the SPA and the scale of the proposals, that these developments would not alone or in combination with other developments cause a significant effect, and that an appropriate assessment would not be required. Whilst it is recognised that Waverley is the competent and determining authority on this matter, on the basis of the advice received, it would not, in officers' opinion, be reasonable to refuse tonight's applications on the grounds of impact on the Wildon Heath SPA, and there is no need to undertake an appropriate assessment, and there is therefore no barrier to determining these applications based on the impact on the Wildon Heath Special Protection Area. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Right, we now move to the one item on our agenda tonight. This is item A1, which is subject to public speaking. WA 2019-0230 Goose Cottage, Green Lane, Dockenfield, GU104JD. Application under Section 73 to vary Condition 1 of WA 2017-1499, approved plans for direction of detached dwelling and double garage to allow alterations to elevations as amplified by plan received 8th of 5th 2019, and amended by plans received 30th of May 2019. Philippa Staden to present the application, please.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, members. This application is made under Section 73 of the Town and Country Planning Act 1990. Section 73 of the Act enables applicants to seek to vary or remove conditions associated with a planning permission. One of the uses of a Section 73 application is to seek a minor material amendment where there is a relevant condition that can be varied. The application seeks to vary Condition 1 of WA 2017-1499, the approved plan numbers condition, to allow minor alterations to the approved elevations and to reposition the approved garage. I'd like to draw members' attention to a separate application, WA 2019-0383, at Goose Cottage, for extensions and alterations to the existing dwelling, as well as new access fencing and landscaping. Whilst clearly being in close proximity to the application under consideration tonight, it is entirely separate and does not form part of the assessment of this application. So this slide shows the location of the application site, marked in red. It is to the south-east of Green Lane, and is accessed via an existing access to Goose Cottage, here. The existing garage shown here would be demolished to make way for the access track to the back of the site, and yet the site is located to the rear of the existing cottage. Here we see the aerial photograph. The site is here, and it shows the location of Green Lane, the street and an access track which accesses dwellings to the rear of the site here. I've provided some site photos. So Photograph A here shows the location of the existing garage which would be demolished, leading to the access track to the rear. Photograph B is taken from the rear of the site, looking towards the existing cottage at Goose Cottage. Photograph C is taken sort of partway up the access track, looking to the rear of the site, and D is taken from the side of the existing cottage, looking to the rear. And again, some more photographs. E is taken here, looking across the site. F looks towards the corner of the site here, where the proposed garage would be located. G is looking towards this corner of the site, and H again is looking back up towards the existing cottage, showing where the dwelling would be located. On this slide, I've shown the proposed block plan, which is proposed as part of this application, and the block plan for the consented scheme. You'll note that the sort of main alteration really is just that the garage, which was approved here, has been moved slightly further back into the corner of the site. On this slide, I've shown the comparison between the proposed elevations, as proposed by this application, and the consented elevations. I'll run through the sort of key differences for you. So on the south-eastern elevation, so shown in the top two drawings, we see minor alterations to the fenestration, including an additional first-floor dormer window here, the removal of the chimney, and a slight increase in the width of the single-storey projection here. You'll see it's slightly wider than that consented. On the north-western elevation, we just see minor alterations to the fenestration, so there's one additional first-floor window there, and some slightly bigger windows. Moving on to the south-western and north-eastern elevations, again, some minor alterations to the fenestration, including an additional first-floor window. It's on this one. And we'll see a chimney is proposed here, which wasn't there previously. Other variations to the consented scheme are set out on the officer report, but I'll run through them for you here. They include a reduction in the maximum width of the proposed dwelling, a reduction in the maximum depth of the proposed dwelling, an increase in the maximum roof ridge of the proposed dwelling, which I think you can see more clearly here. So there's just this gable is slightly raised, but the remaining roof remains as it was, and the aforementioned reciting of the garage. So on this slide, I've shown the ground floor plans of the proposed scheme and the consented floor plan. They are largely similar, but with internal alterations. And similarly, first-floor plans, largely the same, slight alteration to some of the single-storey projections, but they're in broadly the same location as they were before. On this slide, I've provided an overlay between the consented scheme and the proposed scheme. The red line, which hopefully members can see, shows the consented scheme with the current proposal, sort of beneath the red line. On this slide, I've shown the garage plans. So the garage size, scale and form remains as per the previous application, it has just been moved slightly to the corner, approximately sort of four metres to the east. So it's a material consideration that there's an extent permission, WA 2017-1499, that is granted and could be implemented, and members here are asked to consider the variation to Condition 1, which is the approved plans. The main matters which... So officers have given consideration to the proposal and consider that the changes proposed fall well within the scope of an application to vary the plan's condition. In addition, the changes are all considered acceptable for the reasons set out in the officer report and mentioned above. Officers consider that the main matters of consideration for members would be the impact on the AGLV and countryside. Whilst it's acknowledged that minor alterations are proposed to the design of the dwelling, the scale, bulk, siting and mass remain broadly the same as the approved scheme, and the alterations are not considered harmful to the landscape and intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. Design and impact on visual amenity. Minor alterations are proposed to the dimensions of the dwelling, as well as a number of alterations to the fenestration. Notwithstanding this, the proposed design is considered to be similar to the approved dwelling. The design is considered to be acceptable on this basis. With regards to the impact on residential amenity, the officer report contains a detailed assessment of the impact of the proposal on residential amenity. The proposal is considered acceptable for the reasons set out in the report. With regard to the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity space, similarly, the proposal is considered to provide an acceptable standard of accommodation for future occupiers and amenity space for the occupiers. Therefore, the application is recommended for approval. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Phil. Right, we now have the opportunity for public speaking, and I'd like to invite, we've got three speakers, and I'd like to invite them at the time. First of all, Mr John McDonald, who is an objector, please. You have four minutes, Mr McDonald, and the timer will be counting down.
The neighbours I speak for believe that these new plans do indeed represent a very different house to the traditional oak-flamed-framed cottage that was previously applied for and approved. It is different in design, in the increased ridge height, in the construction method and the longer time it will take to build it, hence more disruption to the neighbours, in the increased number and size of the windows overlooking neighbouring properties, and in the changed position of the garage. We conclude, therefore, that this should be dealt with as a new application, not as a change to a previously approved plan, but will leave argument over these technical issues to the parish council. In coming to a decision, we would ask that the committee gives due weight also to the procedural, ethical and human factors raised by our objections, which are equally important, but which seem to have been overlooked here. In particular, we'd ask you to consider whether the council staffs exceeded their authority in dealing with the original planning application, WA 2017-1499, under delegated powers, how that may have affected the outcome, and what bearing this has on the present case. The original application was made by the previous owner, a legal officer employed by the council until shortly before the application was approved. That approval was given without the scrutiny of committee and in the face of more than 20 letters of objection, thus breaking many years of planning precedent in the village. We believe this action ran directly contrary to local government guidance regarding probity in the handling of planning applications from current and former councillors and officers. These guidelines at page nine are unequivocal on the subject, saying amongst other things that such proposals should be reported to planning committee and not dealt with by officers under delegated powers. Whatever the rights and wrongs of this matter, the net result that the neighbours are now faced with a prospect of a large house of inappropriate design being erected hard against their borders and overlooking their hitherto very private homes and gardens. The selection of such a highly visible position is as inexplicable as it is insensitive. It is difficult to imagine anything more objectionable, particularly when there's more than enough space to position the house more discreetly. We urge you to carry out an onsite inspection to witness the impact this new proposal would have on the quiet enjoyment of neighbouring homes. This application by the new owner provides an opportunity for the committee to mitigate negative impact on neighbours by brokering an arrangement through which the whole building could be transferred to a laneside position south of the existing Goose Cottage, and the boundaries between the two houses redrawn. There it would overlook no one, and would have the added advantage of providing much improved access for vehicles and plant required for construction. To satisfy the objectors, they would need to be assured that the currently approved site could never be built on in the future, and to satisfy the developer, the necessary planning consents for the move to the new position would need to be assured. We ask you exceptionally to support this unusual but pragmatic step towards a compromise satisfying all parties. Equally importantly, from our point of view, this might also restore some much-needed faith in the probity of the planning system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could I now call on Jessica Hobley, who is the clerk of Dockenfield Parish Council? Roger Trout, I'm sorry, I do apologise.
That's right, yes, I'm not Jessica. Before I start, could I possibly ask Philippa to move her slides back a couple, please, that are on the screen? Keep going, you're there. That one, and then it'll be forward one as I speak, sorry, that would be helpful. Okay, thank you. This is the first back garden development in Dockenfield for about 20 years. The parish council would not oppose moving it to a laneside location instead. I've got three main points. Firstly, we interviewed the head of planning over this delegated decision, and was told that they received legal advice. The head of planning had unfortunately no answer when told that that advice was from the very legal department where the applicant was working at the time, and the delegated decision was made only a few days after she left. Who did not know the probity guidelines? We normally work well with officers, including Philippa, but in this particular situation, we're concerned that the same officer is being used for this report and recommendation. And it appears in the report to be a re-justification to approve, rather than a Section 73. The report is written as though it were a normal planning application, not a Section 73 response with its key elements. She quotes, I quote, "The proposal is in effect a fresh application for the entire development, albeit with a variation to that original condition. So why not make it a normal application?" A clever, funny way to proceed. "It is for an inferior urban house differing greatly from the high-quality building approved." "So the applicant can build it," was what we were told. The officer reports the ridge height is significantly taller, about half a metre, which is not really shown in that slide, but the next slide, please, Philippa, shows that it is actually slightly taller, which is different from the printed version you have in front of you. The taller ridge height is quite considerable, and there are three importantly different additional windows precisely where they overlook the closest neighbours to the north-east and south-east. Most windows upstairs are significantly larger. Being significantly more intrusive by this height in the neighbourhood is a material consideration, and it will be certainly more highly visible from the street. We suggest in particular the garage and the higher ridge are also excessively overbearing Bracken Lodge to the north-east, especially which is nearly five metres lower in ground level. Secondly, the application is for Section 73 to vary conditions. I'm delighted we have the lawyer in the centre there. This seems to be a very unusual approach. We've been doing this for 35 years in Dockenfield, have not had one, Section 73. But the officer seems to have treated it as a normal application, and the key element is changes to conditions relating, in this case, to changes to elevations. My understanding, if the planning conditions remain the same, the application should be refused. If the conditions are different, the application should be passed. Waverley has normal conditions on all sorts of things, including new builds, and the officer recommends the same ones here. We say Condition 1 is actually the same, sticking to the plans submitted with the application, which is a requirement of Section 62 of the Planning Act and best practice. The applicant indicates that because these plans are labelled differently, E6 to 10, rather than 1 to 5, the planning condition is thus different. If that were actually true, all S73 applications must be passed as of right if they contain a drawing. Thirdly, several material matters have been dealt with were deliberately ignored, especially the large vehicle capability of entering the site because of the impossible sightlines and the narrow lane. So delighted if you can get proper advice, visit to see the site, or refuse this application, that it's not a S Section 73. Thank you, sir.
Right, and finally, we have David Holmes, who's the agent.
Thank you, Chair, members. By way of an introduction, I am David Holmes, a chartered town planner and agent to the applicant, Mr Kirkby. I'd like to thank officers from the council for the detailed report before you, and hope that the recommendation will be carried. I will keep this brief and not take up too much of your time this evening. The application being considered is a Section 73 application to amend the plans approved by the original planning permission, WA 2017-1499. It is therefore appropriate for members and the council to consider whether the alterations to the proposal that benefits from planning permission are indeed acceptable. As members will note, on pages six and seven of the pack, alterations are minor. The only notable difference arising from a slight increase in the ridge and the gable by some 42 centimetres. However, the width of the proposed dwelling actually decreased by 45 centimetres and 70 centimetres respectively. We do not consider that the alterations to the approved plans result in any harm to either the overall design to the property or indeed neighbouring residents. The proposal remains compliant with the council's adopted planning policies, and there is no material considerations that indicate that planning permission should be withheld. It's an established fact that applications under Section 73 that seek to amend the planning conditions by introducing new plans do indeed fall under that section of the Town and Country Planning Act and can be approved, should the council deem them not to be harmful. I would also note that the community have raised concerns with the way the original application was handled, insofar as the application was not heard by the committee. I do not consider that the assessment of this application is an appropriate mechanism to revisit decisions issued by the council, and consider concerns raised by the neighbours on this point not material to the assessment of the application before you. I note that the parish and the neighbours offer to move the dwelling laneside, however, I do not see how this can be secured through the planning system. It would be a matter of consideration outside of this committee. To conclude, we consider the application before you should be approved in accordance with the officer's recommendation to grant consent. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Before we move on, do any of the officers want to comment on what's been said, particularly in Section 73?
Thank you, Chairman. Particularly with regards to the points of the... In terms of conflict of interest, we can confirm there's no conflict of interest in relation to this application. We've acted within the scheme of delegation in determining the original application, but equally, this isn't the appropriate forum to be reviewing a decision that's already been made. I would suggest you focus on the application that's before you and the changes between that and the consented scheme. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr Chairman, I would just add that the original permission is now beyond challenge under Section 288 of the Town and Country Planning Act. So it cannot be disturbed unless... That is the basic position, Mr Chairman.
Thank you for that. Moving on to councillors, anyone who wants to go on?
Sorry, thank you, Chairman. I think it's well worth just stressing to members, there is a scheme that has permission, it can be implemented. So what we are asking you to debate is, are those differences, do those differences give rise to harm material enough to warrant a refusal of this Section 73 planning application? You're looking at the discrepancies, the differences between the consented scheme and the scheme before you this evening only. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillors, yes, councillor Adam.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't see that we can, in one hand, be told that this is just by minor variations and therefore we should ignore the original, at the same time as ignoring the original application, because it's obviously totally based on the fact that there's an original application there already, sorry, already been passed. Perhaps the process was not followed properly, but that application was passed. So we can't actually ignore it, because the whole thing is based on the fact that you want to change some of the conditions which actually, that, which applied from that application. So the question is whether in fact this is a new development, or whether in fact it's a minor alteration. And quite frankly, I think it's a new development. You've heard what the parish council's view is, and the local neighbours. There's no doubt that those new windows at the back would overlook quite significantly the amenities of the houses behind it, or below it, rather, and I will vote against this application.
Councillor Deere.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I may be being dim here, but this seems to be, it seems to me that there's an existing, unchallengeable planning consent for a development that is almost identical, except in very small degrees of detail. The ridge height difference is one foot four inches, I believe, having just done a little calculation. The consent exists. These seem to me the most trivial alterations to that, and whilst I respect and have heard the vehemence and conviction with which the various speakers have put their cases, this seems, it seems to me the idea of refusing what we have here is absurd. It seems to me the idea of trying to defend the inevitable appeal would also be absurd. I mean, as far as I can see, that our job here is to vote, approve the amendments that are being proposed, and move on.
Councillor James.
Thank you, Chairman. Whilst I've listened to the objections as well, and if I lived there, I probably would be objecting every time I could, but planning is planning, and approval's been given for a very similar dwelling. The fact that I don't like the design of it is not a material planning matter. I hate big windows and I hate modern buildings, but modern adoptions, but that's not my problem. I'm not buying it, and the architect wouldn't be designing it if the client didn't want it. The fact that it didn't come to committee is not, again, a planning matter for me. If the local member had been asked to bring it to committee beforehand, they probably could have, but it didn't come, and that's how delegated powers are done. It doesn't matter how many objections there are. It doesn't automatically mean that it comes to committee. There's a triggering amount, and if a certain amount had come and the local member had wanted it to come to committee, then that would have been the process, but it didn't come. It's been done under delegated powers. It is unfortunate for the people who live there who don't want something built in a green bit, but I have got no problems with it at all under the planning system that we are here to agree upon, and therefore I will be agreeing with the officer's recommendations. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Abini.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. My question is about the change of chimneys. It slightly confused me. They've taken the one off the top, and there's another one now being put on, the garden house. Is there any particular reason why, to my mind, chimneys at that height, the lower height, it's a new one, would that smoke towards those windows in it? Or is there any particular reason they've got a chimney there, rather than... Or is there any particular reason they've got a chimney there rather than not in the first application? It has confused me.
It's simply a nature of internal layout of where the architect has set. It looks like a wood burner. Obviously, chimneys will also be subject to building regulations, which would control the height and where the smoke will go from that. So I, my understanding that has been taken into account.
Councillor Nicholson.
Yes, the application pushes the limit, acceptable changes, primarily of the height of the dwelling and the upper window provision. And I think the applicant knows that, he's taken it to the very limits. I have a question, has there been a yellow notice displayed? There's not. Well, that's very poor. This is a rather arrogant and professional attitude that's guaranteed to upset neighbours. And we've seen there's been a very full and detailed objections by the parish council and from the eleven addresses from people in the village, and they've certainly made their views well-known. However, the officers have provided a very detailed report here, and there doesn't appear to be a clear or valid reason to refuse the scheme. So I reluctantly agree with the officer's decision to grant approval.
Thank you.
Do you want to say?
Yes, I just would like to ask whether the local ward member was consulted prior to this application being delegated.
Excuse me, pardon, member, are you referring to the original application rather than this application?
Yes.
Yes, yes, there were.
Okay. Well, can I just say that we have got a full report, and I do consider it would be extremely difficult for us to refuse this. And I have to say, if it went to appeal, I can honestly say that we would lose this. And, you know, I don't see what grounds we can refuse reluctantly.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Well, I'm sorry, I mean, I think, I'm sorry that my colleagues here have a different view, but the number of changes that are actually coming through on this is really making it a different application. It shouldn't be a section twenty-three, because that, as you said, was purely to deal with small changes of conditions. This is actually completely changing the structure, the size of the property, the windows, the overlooking. And really, I mean, to say that there's nothing here that isn't objectionable, I find amazing. So I will continue to refuse this application.
Okay. Anyone else want to...
Sorry, can I come back? If members are likely to agree the officer's recommendation, do the conditions attached to this one, can they change from the conditions from the original one? Because, as officers know, because the ridge height has been extended, I would be very unhappy if under permitted developments they could put, you know, three velux windows up there within permitted development, because the ridge height has now increased, and have another couple of bedrooms up there. So I would, if we can, I'd like permitted development rights removed from on that one, as the officers know, it's my absolute beef, because otherwise there is no reason to increase that ridge height, except to put another couple of rooms up there. Thank you, Chairman.
Officers?
Just for clarity, the application itself is to amend condition one, which is the approved plans. All the other conditions remain as were approved, and condition seven of the original application does remove those permitted development rights for enlargement. Enlargement to the dwelling house hereby permitted shall be constructed without the written permission. But it doesn't revoke... It's enlargement, it's fine.
Right, anybody else wants to say anything else? No? All right, okay. Well, and, excuse me, we have to move on to the recommendation. The recommendation is that subject to conditions one to sixteen and in form of this one to eleven, as stated in the report, permission be granted. Those in favour? Those against?
Six in favour and one against.
Well, I'm afraid they can... It's granted, and therefore... There are no items that can do an exempt session? So therefore that concludes today, it's me.